Meeting called to order, please. Please join me in prayers. Today, as dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted to stay the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gitchia.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
That's the 11th present.
Do you have any moment of silence? Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Just like to offer a moment of silence for Tom Birmingham. Thomas F. Birmingham, former Massachusetts Senate President, union labor lawyer of Chelsea, passed away January 20th. He leaves behind his wife Selma, his daughters Erica and Megan, both of New York, and many friends and family. He'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
And at the moments of silence and at the memorials, I do have one, and if there's an objection, I'd like to read from up here. I would like to request a moment of silence in darkened chamber for the 11 victims of the Monterey Park mass shooting and the seven victims of the Half Moon Bay shootings. Both occurred in California. Although their names have not been disclosed, I want us to come together as a community to honor and pay tribute to all 18 human beings who were injured or killed while celebrating a special occasion with their loved ones and while working hard to make a decent living for the family. Let us remember that each held a special place in the hearts of their families and friends. Let us take special care as we work together as a united community to advocate that local governments everywhere forge better policies to protect its citizen. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please dim the light. We now go to the mayor's business. 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Janess. Motion is adopted. I did not have one item on the agenda, so I'd like to ask for a motion to suspend the rules, second by Counselor Robinson. It is because to, we have special guests visiting us from all the way from Cambodia, from the University of Indiraak Vichya, and bringing the visitors to visit City Hall to forge relationship. Mr. Sam Khan Kurn, please introduce the members to us. And Mr. Sam Khan Kurn is a Lowell resident.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the city councils and also the public here as well. I am Sam Khan Kurn, a resident of Lowell. Have been here for over 20 years already. Has been a friend to the mayor as well as to a member of some of the council here. I have the pleasure of knowing and would like to introduce a special guest from Cambodia, and that is from the University of Indiraak Vichya, meaning that the University of Knowledge, literally translate. And like the mayor say, he is here in the purpose of forming a relationship to, so that between university here in the U.S. as well as in Cambodia, so that people in Cambodia, especially the students from Cambodia, can continue their education in the higher ed institution here in the U.S. So without further ado, I just wanted to introduce Dr. Lai Som Brown, and he came with, he's coming with five members of his delegation from the institution as well. So Dr. Brown, please come and say a few words.
Thank you. And the first time for me from Cambodia to United States, the first time I apologize for my English because I'm from the country that we are study the law for English. So the first time I want to thank you to Mayor Sokari Chow. I'm the director of the University of Indiraak Vichya, and many thank you to all excellency and madam for the chamber of the City Hall in Lowell. And I want to contact for the exchange program for Cambodia and United States for exchange program for study for university. My university in Cambodia, we has a major for study in Cambodia, and now I, I think that the Cambodian and United States is a friendship. And the future, we want to bring a student from Cambodia to study in Lowell in the United States. And it's this time for me, I'm very pleasure. And it's a warm regard to excellency and madam for the chamber in the City Hall. Thank you so much.
Thank you for visiting our city and to have the continuing, continuing relationship building, especially in the sector of education is very important to both cities. Thank you for being here. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Robinson. The motion is adopted. We now go to section three, the City Clerk, 3.1. Minutes of City Council Regular Meeting, January 17th for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Gitchia. Motion is adopted. The next item on the agenda is a general public hearing, which we will hold at 7:00. We do have a few minutes, so we'll skip that part first to go to section five, which is communication from the City Manager, which are the motion responses. We'll start with motion response A.
Can I ask, could I ask for a suspension of the rules to take 10.2, motion 10.2 out of order?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Gitchia to take item motion 10.2 out of order, second by Counselor Noon. Motion 10.2 is Counselor Gitchia requests City Manager revisit the premium pay for employee eligible out of the ARPA funds. Mr. Clerk, do we have a, would you speak on this or just? Got a second, I counsel Noon already. Counselor Gitchia, do you want the speaker to go first? Okay. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Keith Rudy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, staff and city councils. Good evening. I speak before you tonight as the former business agent for the Merrimack Valley Employees Association and as the former president for Local 1705 for 20 years. As some of you people don't know, I was an employee for the City Lowell for 32 years in various departments. As a business agent during this period of time of March of 2020, when we had the outbreak for the virus and we shut down most of, most of your operations in the city and people working remotely, a lot of our employees came to work every day. Whether they were mechanics in the police and fire departments to make sure the vehicles are running properly, whether they were animal control officers doing their work daily, whether it was wastewater employees who are treating outsides every day in water department, department of public works, parks. Everything was normal for these guys coming back to work every day and even on overtime. I know we had large outbreaks of the virus at the, at the wastewater treatment plant. We almost, we almost had to close it down. It got that bad. But the men were remarkable and they worked overtime. A lot of these guys working 16 hours a day, six days a week. And I know we had a part of our proposals and negotiations. We were with the manager. The manager at the time said, it was a new farm, so it was new to everybody, saying it didn't belong at the table in negotiations. I definitely disagreed with her, but the final outcome, we signed an MOU. At the time we signed the MOU, I asked that we sign an amendment just as a me-too agreement in case of other groups getting some money and other groups who were essential employees, our group not getting money. She refused to sign that. So here we are. So a lot of these employees who were essential workers, the guys you're seeing, that were just praised maybe a month ago or five weeks ago for what they did with the flood. These men and women are coming out to work every day. They didn't stay home. They didn't work remotely. They came to work. So when we heard there was essential, there was money going to essential employees, we were just waiting for a call. I know the employees were getting, waiting for a call. The call never came. So that's why we're here now. So we're here to support Counselor Gitchia's motion and ask that we go back to the table, the manager, just to look at some of these essential employees and what they mean for the city. And I think in a big picture, it's about respect. These men and women just want respect. And I think, and I'm really hoping that the councils will support to get back to the table. Maybe we can put a fair compensation for these employees and for their dedication during the time when the city needed them. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any other registered speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Gitchia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been talking about ARPA funding for it seems like eternity, and we've read and read and read more presentations about ARPA funding and how it's going to be distributed. In the beginning, we saw a presentation that outlined $3 million for essential pay, premium pay for employees. And as it went on, we saw it reduced and brought forth. Never knowing, I had to ask the manager today how many employees the city actually had on the city side, and he said 978 roughly in that area, under 1,000. So when you look at that number and you start looking at how it was distributed, they distributed 426 employees in the city, which is roughly 42.6% of the employees received $2,500 or less. It was prorated for others. And as we saw, we looked and you saw police and fire and dispatches and detention attendants. Rightfully so, they deserved every penny they got. And there's no question about that. But as we thought and we read through what the outline was for premium pay, it outlined everything many employees who didn't get it do in this city every day. Some of these employees here tonight haven't gone home to see their families. They were out plowing, salting. And you know, this city has cut back and it keeps cutting back, and it fails to recognize its own employees. It seems like we do this divide and conquer. We've expected more of these employees and we've given them less tools and more responsibility. We sit here and we try to understand how they feel as they're trying not to fall asleep, as they're trying to make pennies on the dollar because they're so underpaid. We have to do wage studies because they haven't been recognized. If anyone ever said to me that there was money coming in the future, hold off, and gave money to any other group when I fit under the same eligibility, and we can debate that back and forth. It says eligibility as workers needed to maintain continuum of operation of essential, crucial infrastructure sectors, state, local, or tribal government workforce. To verify who is an eligible worker, they perform essential duties. They involve either regular in-person interaction with patients, the public, or coworkers of individuals that is performing the work. Or regular physical, physically handling of items that were handled by or are to be handled by patients, the public, or coworkers of individuals that perform that work. That's almost every single person in the city. We had City Hall open. We had clerks going outside to collect the mail to get payment on things that they were running back and forth from. We've watched our own employees spend time in the hospital because they were required to come to work. They got COVID. I personally know one who spent eight, eight days in a hospital bed, fighting. But they're not eligible. For some reason, they didn't get included in any of this. 57.4% of the workforce didn't get included in this package, which to me is just unbelievable when every person in this city who works for this city has value to me. We should be recognizing them. We should be putting them on a pedestal. We should be telling them how good they are because of where they work, and we should try to recognize as many as we can, as outlined. If we, we want to recognize, retain, and create an environment where employees feel valued, we need to revisit this issue. We need to revisit it strongly. We have 1,000 employees. If we gave each one of them $2,500, the same that went across and prorated, whatever way it was prorated, but be clear about how we're prorating it. Just don't prorate it. Be clear about it. If we would have given everybody the exact amount, it would have been $2.5 million out the door would have been spent. We took care of 426 employees and spent $999,328 on 426 employees. And I value and I thank the manager for doing that. I think they're all valued employees. But to talk about divide and conquer, someone just said it at the mic. We have a fire department mechanic who didn't get it, but everybody around him got it. You go to the police station, other people got it, but those same police officers had to come into the police station and interact with those employees. That means they're eligible for this premium pay as outlined by law. We need to do better if we're going to build a workforce that wants to work for us every day. You look in here and you look at, none of them are getting paid to be here, and they get paid pennies on the dollar compared to other communities. And I would, I would just ask the City Manager, and I would ask the clerk to take a voice road call on this motion. So every city councillor is on record of where they stand on how we treat our employees and where we're going to go from here. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to speak about this. I think it has a lot of value on where we're going to go with our employees in the future. I do believe the manager has all the employees in his mind, and he did call me earlier and said that he didn't really have much of a problem revisiting this. So I thank the manager for returning my phone call, and I thank you, Mayor Chow, for allowing me the time to speak.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Gitchia's motion is about fairness. When we talk about premium pay and those who worked during the COVID-19 time when others stayed home. In my opinion, it's not just about the wording of essential workers. It's about those City of Lowell workers, employees who came in despite COVID and performed their duties as usual because the job must go on. The city does not sleep. The city has to still function. It's a 24-hour-a-day operation. Some of the city employees are not titled essential workers per se, but they came in and they did a job that was needed, such as the water department employees, fixed water main breaks, provided maintenance, mechanics. DPW workers came in and performed their jobs in maintenance as well. DPW clerks who came in, answered calls, clerks in the wastewater, water department, et cetera. Wastewater engineers treated the sludge and performed maintenance as well. They could have probably stayed home, but they didn't. They came in. This motion is a matter of fairness. If this city stands for anything, it should at least stand for fairness. If people came in and worked during COVID and got a stipend for that, so should every city employee that physically came in and worked. Those that worked in the comfort, those that worked in the comfort and safety of their home, they got paid, and that's that. But those that physically came in and did their jobs, no matter if you are an essential worker or a first responder, pay each one the same and be fair. This was an unusual time in the life of a city. Some employees got an added $3 an hour stipend while others did not. They didn't get a stipend. Some got $2,500 while others got nothing. This, in my opinion, is not fair. I know each union offers different benefits and others don't get this or some get that, but COVID was unexpected. This situation was not planned in giving out stipends and thank everyone should have gotten, or thanks, but everyone should have gotten the same, even if the dollar value was lower. So everyone was recognized and included fairly. This is my opinion. Some might not like it, but if I'm anything, I like to be fair. And this is a matter of fairness. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. When we think about this ARPA money, it's a once-in-a-lifetime pool of money that, that communities have received. It's a once-in-a-lifetime chance for pretty much the city to say thank you in unprecedented time. We hear the word essential get thrown around. First of all, the governor declared who was essential. But then above and beyond that, local communities decided who also was essential to keep the city running. We have employees of the health department, wastewater, ground zero. I mean, the health department organized how many vaccine immunization programs, N95s, the whole nine. I know this administration, I mean, at first, again, we were thrilled. Set aside for premium pay for employees. I know this administration does and is going to continue to work to honor and elevate our employees. It's not a matter of that. I think the way this was rolled out was done, and I'm not going to sit here and blame the administration. I've seen some of the stuff that happened, and I think some of the, some of the groups need to look at other employees internally and do better, much better, be more mindful of their people that showed up every day. I personally know an employee that was pretty much bedridden as a result of showing up to work and picking up COVID during this pandemic. Some of our employees I've talked to received three N95s from start to finish, and they were tasked with keeping the downtown clean. But yet, for whatever reason, they were carved out by their own group for receiving this. Another thing, we have people that worked and due to the impact of working through the pandemic and the mental health state, some people retired. They were carved out of this. I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna look at compensating people at, for the core of this, people that showed up when the bell was rung, people that provided a service to keep the city going, I think all the people that showed up in person should be considered in this. And again, I've had conversations with the manager and he's mentioned. He, he's not opposed to having a discussion again on this. I think the administration's heart was in the right place. They tried to do the right thing, and some things fell through the crack on this. So it's, it's, I don't want to spin or put it out there like this is something solely that falls on the administration for picking and choosing. And some of these groups, they picked and chose, for whatever reason that may be. I just think this is a golden opportunity, and if we have to consider pulling funds from a different basket eventually to make good and really show how appreciated our employees are, so be it. I, I think, I know this is the manager's discretion when it comes to the ARPA funding and expenditures, but I also know that this is one of the first managers I saw that's really taken the time to get out, meet the employees, has no problem going to where the employees are and just patting them on the back and telling them, we appreciate you. So I think we'll be able to work this out. And again, I just think to have these people show up time and time again and not look to compensate everyone that would be eligible under the ARPA guidelines. Not the guidelines set forth by groups that were looking to benefit by themselves, but, but guidelines that were set forth that came along with this money. I think it's something we can do, and I think the support of the council and the manager would be there to at least sit down and have another discussion on this because as I started this conversation off, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to acknowledge and show our employees some appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm in support of this motion, but what I realized when this was filed is that I, I personally really don't have a good grasp of who has received premium pay under this program and who has not. So I wanted to just ask the maker of the motion if he would be willing to accept a friendly amendment to request that the City Manager just provide the council with a breakdown of who has currently received premium pay under this program and, and what the criteria was essentially to decide that. It doesn't have to be by individual name, but just essentially, you know, how many and what, what criteria was established to, to determine who would receive it thus far. So, and again, if the maker is willing to accept that, that friendly amendment. But what I, what I just wanted to add to that is that, you know, the amounts that have been granted under this program really can't be considered as adequate financial compensation for the sacrifices that many of our employees made by reporting to work in person throughout the course of the pandemic. What it is, is really a small gesture of appreciation. Obviously, we're a city, we're under financial constraints. We can't offer what would probably considered a fair and adequate compensation for those sacrifices, but we can offer them something as a gesture of appreciation. something as a gesture of appreciation. But if there are employees who performed similar work in similar situations, working in close physical proximity to others, whether that be coworkers or whether it be members of the public, and they haven't been included in this program, then I think that does create a problem just in terms of morale. You know, we like to show a gesture of appreciation to boost the morale of employees who have worked extremely hard, who make personal sacrifices on behalf of the residents of the City of Lowell, and if there are employees who, again, worked under a similar criteria but just have not been included in the program thus far, then I think we are sort of working at cross purposes in terms of, you know, boosting morale on the one hand and potentially turning it on the other. So I think this is the appropriate motion, just to keep the door open in terms of revisiting the criteria and who may be included under this, under this program. So appreciate this being, being brought forward, and I look forward to supporting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Before we go to the next councillor who want to speak on this motion, just want to get back to councillor Gitchia. The request was to make an amendment to revisit, to have a breakdown of which employees qualify for it and the criteria as well. You are open to that, councillor?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, wonderful. The motion is amended. Councillor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to thank councillor Gitchia for the motion, and I also spoke with Kiki regarding this matter as well. My only comment is that I would ask that the manager revisit the premium pay for all of our employees, especially the one that, you know, come out to work physically during the pandemic. This is a way to appreciate what their sacrifice to serve the residents of the city. So I strongly urge the manager to revisit this, this premium pay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to just say thank you to my colleague councillor Gitchia for bringing this motion forward. I think this is a great motion, and it's something that we need to do as a city. I'd also like to thank Kiki who came and spoke, and I'd also like to thank everyone else who took time out of their evenings to be here in support of the motion and in support of Kiki. I think that a lot of good things have been mentioned that I agree with. This is about respect, this is about fairness, this is about taking care of the employees. No organization can do anything without its employees. The employees are the organization, and enable the organization to reach goals that are set by boards like this, by administrations. We can't get there without the employees. So thank you all for showing up, and thank you to anyone who's watching at home who is also a city employee and, you know, has worked so hard for this city over the past three years during this pandemic. It's been incredible to watch everyone and the things that we're able to be accomplished during this time of such challenges. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, and I look forward to supporting this motion.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd actually just like to take a moment to thank my colleagues for helping me to understand and maybe for the public to understand the amount of things that happened behind the scenes. Employees that worked in public spaces, well, you know, we were all at home, had to handle shared materials with the public, like handling trash and other items. I support this motion. I think that we need to treat everybody fairly, and I do appreciate the idea, though, to receive the criteria that was used in the determination and what would be covered by ARPA reimbursement as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to councillor Gitchia for filing this motion. I agree with just about everything that my colleague stated, fairness, acknowledgement, and so on. And to some extent too, is that I don't know how or what criteria are being used to determine who's get the money and who's not, and, you know, so the amendment to councillor Gitchia's motion is the right one so that we know exactly what criteria are being used to determine who is an essential worker. So, you know, revisit is the right things to do, is fair things to do, so I'm in support of this as well. So maybe the manager can, and the team can go back and look at it and come back with a number for the council, so that the council can vote on it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Leahy?
Thank you. A lot of good points were brought up tonight. Thank you for the amendment to the motion. So yes, I think, you know, let's take a revisit of this, get the report back and see what we can do. Thank you.
Wonderful. Great motion to begin with, and a great discussion and comments by all the councillors, and the amendment to the original motion makes it more comprehensive. And ultimately, you know, I want to thank the employees who are at home and as was here, as councillor Janess mentioned, thank you for being here to advocate for yourself, and thank you for working the city, and for you to come watch local government work because the function of local government is to work for you. So it's great to see everyone here in the chamber tonight. With that said, Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councillor Janess?
Yes.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes.
Councillor Mercier?
Yes.
Councillor Noonan?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Scott?
Yes.
Councillor Yem?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
Forgot the mayor. Forgot the mayor.
Yes. The workers need the support of the mayor as well, Mr. Clerk. We're now at 7:06.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Robinson?
I'd like to suspend the rules and, could we take?
Councillor Robinson, before you finish that, we have a general public hearing which goes on at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
After we finish this, and I will call on you to suspend the rules. Is that okay with you? It being 7:07, we now take up the general public hearing, which is item 4.1, the ordinance to create a position of IT manager at the Career Center. This portion is now open to, I'm going to just give a couple of minutes for people to leave. Okay, we're now taking on the creative position of IT manager for the Career Center. This portion is now open to all those in favor. Mr. Clerk, do you have anybody who's here to speak in favor? Anybody who's here to speak in favors up there?
Good evening.
There's a lot of motion up there.
I know.
Okay. Ms. Shannon Norton?
Yes. My name is Shannon Norton. I am the executive director at Mass Hire Lowell Career Center, and I live at 137 Lincoln Parkway in Lowell. This position, we're asking it to be created in the ordinance because we had a longtime employee of 40 years retire. Part of his job was doing some of this IT work, and some of it was outstationed to consultants that are very expensive. So we wanted to take this opportunity with his retirement to combine those duties into one in-house position that's funded 100% with state and federal funds. And anytime we can take the burden off of city hall employees and pay for the work to be done with our state and federal grants, we want to do that. And, you know, this position will work with Moran in MIS on big projects, but it will relieve his burden, his department's burden of dealing with any of the IT issues and things we have at the Career Center. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, councillors. Kevin Coughlin, I'm the executive director of the Greater Lowell Workforce Board, Mass Hire. Want to speak in favor of this motion also for the new position. Mobility for the Career Center employees and extending the services beyond the building is going to be very important in the future. This will allow us to engage greater services to a greater area. It will also help us to expand beyond just the downtown, go out into the neighborhoods, and to be able to contribute in a good way with the particular IT setup that will be more modernized and more professionalized, in such a way to provide greater services to all the neighborhoods and to all the sections of the city. So I want to register my favorability and thank you for your support.
Anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Anyone who's here to speak in favor? That portion is now closed. This portion is now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. This section is now closed. Any comments or questions by councillors? Councillor Robinson, and then councillor Noonan. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. I know we've had motions on the agenda, and we've been working towards something like the 3-1-1 system. So would this position allow us to kind of help with integrating Career Center opportunities and those things with the 3-1-1 if we end up bringing that online over here? So that IT person, it was mentioned that they'll be able to work with Moran, would that be something that potentially could help facilitate a 3-1-1 implementation?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, three to the council. Councillor, I wouldn't say that it wouldn't, but the Career Center, and Ms. Norton's here to correct me, it's so unique that their IT department, or lack of IT department at this point in time, it doesn't just, it doesn't meld with our folks because of their, the state agencies that they're dealing with. So it's a little bit different, but I would invite Ms. Norton just to add that. But I do love the 3-1-1 because we were just talking with Mr. Fernandez the other day about that, so.
Sorry, the 3-1-1 is, I wouldn't know.
Councillor Robinson, you want to?
No, I mean, anytime we can help with anything, but if it's related to the Career Center or the Workforce Board, and if we can contribute to our part, we will do that. So like I said, I don't want to have, we don't want to have the hall staff have to do extra work when we can pay for it out of our grants, when it relates to us. But to the manager's point, we do have our own servers, we have a customer server, we have our own network, our own website, we have state employees that are located on-site, they have access to their stuff at the state, so it is, it's a different animal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and three to the council. Councillor, what it may help, what it will help, is with employee recruitment. We have been shifting an awful lot from HR to allow our HR department to strictly work with that, and I know that Mass Hire has been working extremely hard with trying to assist us in trying to capture those employees. So it definitely is going to be a benefit to the city at the end of the day.
And that was my thought, my question, is that if, I've noticed a lot of job postings are actually being offered through the Career Center as well in conjunction with the city, and I know they've done some tabling events for job recruitment, so the 3-1-1 would allow kind of a streamlined process for the city if that was the trunk of the tree, and that would just be a branch that would kind of feed in ultimately. And if they had their own IT person to make sure whatever, whatever part of that they had on their end ran seamlessly, then I fully support that. Thank you.
Councillor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will vote in support of this as well. I think in the past, the department, the Career Center, have a consultant. Consultant is not that friendly and it's not timely either. So when you have an in-house IT person, instead of consultant, it's more timely and more, you know, more friendly. A lot of things can get done quick, so this is a neat position for the Career Center and Mass Hire. This position will go a long way, especially when it's, they're working in partnership with the IT here in the city, Moran, so I will vote in support of this.
Councillor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Three to Ms. Norton. We talked about combining positions, and could you outline, is there a savings by doing this? And if so, what are we looking at for savings by creating this position?
Well, depending on if there's any big projects coming up, we can spend anywhere from $35,000 to $50,000 on consultants, in addition to a good chunk of the man who's retired, about half of his salary was also being paid. So there is going to be a savings, especially the consultants, they're not always like, to councillor Noonan's point, they're not always available. So sometimes we have to wait a day or two days, and we serve, you know, thousands of customers, you know, during the year, and these are people that have deadlines for unemployment and certain things they need to do, and if something goes wrong, you know, it just would be great to have somebody on staff and, like I said, to save, save a little bit of money in the process.
How much do we currently pay the consultants per hour?
Yeah, it's around $155 an hour.
Okay. I know I work with the Career Center daily, and it's amazingly how good they are at function and making things happen, so I would support this. Thank you.
Councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too support this position. I read through the job description, and, you know, there's quite a lot on this, that will be on this person's plate, from maintaining an internal network, servers, et cetera, to the public-facing computers that folks come in to use for job searching and everything else, and having someone on-site, I think, is definitely the way to go here. I think this, this is a good step for the Career Center, and I look forward to seeing how this connects with city IT in the future. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will also support this vote. In the meantime, before you hire that person, I want to congratulate both of you for doing a fantastic job in communicating with the community through the social media. I've seen so many postings, so many good news, and so many just events that's published by Mass Hire. So congratulate to both of you. Any other comments or questions?
Move approval.
Motion by councillor Mercier, second by councillor Robinson. Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councillor Janess?
Yes.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes.
Councillor Mercier?
Yes.
Councillor Noonan?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rock?
Yes.
Councillor Scott?
Yes.
Councillor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
That's eleven yeas.
Councillor Robinson?
I'd like to suspend the rules and take a vote from the city manager, 6.2, please, out of order.
Motion by councillor Robinson to take 6.2 out of order, second by councillor Mosia. Item 6.2 is a vote to increase cost of living adjustment for City of Lowell retirees. We have full reading and second reading by title. City of Lowell and the city council vote to increase the cost of living adjustment for the City of Lowell retirees. Any comments or questions by anyone? Councillor Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to publicly disclose that I will abstain from this vote due to the conflict of interest in that I will, if this passes, benefit from this vote. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Again, when we go back to former or current employees, I don't know how they live on the money that they get at the end, and, you know, if they were lucky to get 80% of their pay with no increases, right now, when you're watching everything increase, electricity 60%, we're all doing the same thing. I truly believe we owe this to the former employees for their hard work and dedication for building the infrastructure in the city we have, so I do agree with this increase.
Councillor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, for one, will vote to support this, this motion, and they deserve it, and it is a duty to appreciate and to support them back. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson?
I'd like to move to approve.
Moving to approve by councillor Robinson. Councillor Noonan, you want to second that?
I'll second it, and in just a minute, if I could just comment on it, maybe just one question around so that people at home can hear and learn as to what's the amount of increases this will impact, you know, individual retiree. I'm going to have a question for, through you, if you allow me, Mr. Mayor, through you to the CFO on this, Mr. Mayor.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. CFO?
Thank you. The question I have is that what, what does this mean for those who make the least amount monthly, you know, a regular retiree, so to speak, and in term of monthly increase for them, though?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your question, councillor Noonan. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your question, Councilor Noon. The, the impact that the council is voting on is on the $17,000 base, so if we isolate that, that increase, it's about $30 a month to the retiree, but there is also a percentage increase COLA that had been voted prior, which will add to that. Altogether, it's about $70 a month on average to the retiree, but this vote the council will be taking this evening is closer to $30 per month, per retiree.
And does this vote impact FY '24? When this vote will impact, or what year, what FY will this vote impact?
So there's no impact for the coming fiscal year, FY 2024. There will be an impact to the pension assessment for FY 2025 and years thereafter. That impact is about $350,000 in the aggregate.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. CFO. Certainly, this is very minimal, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, I see this as $25 of increase per month, and giving all the impact in term of inflations and stuff on the retiree, and this is a no-brainer. I think, if I recall, this was done way back, I believe, once in 2015. A similar thing was done back then, so, you know, it's the right things to do, as we just, and fair things to do, as we just talked about with regard to the premium pay, the motion of Council Getchea. So I will be vote in favor of this as well.
Motion to adopt by Council Robinson, second by Council Noon. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier? Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Tenyes?
Any other suspension of rules while we're on it? No more suspension?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have any other registered speakers on any other motions, or, oh, okay.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any other items? We now will go back to where we left off, which is the Section 5, Communication from City Manager, which are the motion responses. We start with A, motion response, submetering. Any comments or questions, Council Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the, the water department for the report. This motion is a conversation that I had with a lady who owned a two-family home in Lowell. After her husband passed away, she ended up managing the property, and she was like horrifying to receive a water bill that over $3,000, and she was mortifying to see that how big the bill is. And she then contacted me, and she asked, is there a way that the city would have a water submeter? Because she mentioned that she saw other cities and towns like Boston, Somerville, they do that. And so we had a long discussion that the law is very strict that the homeowner have to install a specific type of shower and toilet and stuff like that, and she says she doesn't mind doing that. The question that I had with her at the end is that, to me, it's not much of the, the money, but the conservation of the water, you know, a precious resource that we have water, to let it flush down the toilet or keep running it, rack up the bills like $3,000, $4,000 per quarter. Do you perceive, sir, that, that Lowell would be in the future providing that, you know, water submeters? Because I know the city providing the water for, water the garden, we have, the city provide that, right, sir?
Thank you, Mayor Chow, City Council, Mayor of Golden Administration. The DEP, Mass DEP, did run a program like that for water conservation on taps and showerheads. They, they don't do it anymore. If they were able to do it, we are able to get the devices off of them, and it's an exchange for residents for cost, at base cost, what we are. As far as submetering goes, that's a landlord's responsibility. There would be so many tendencies in the city that we just don't have the resources to do it. And what happens with submetering is, a landlord buys them and they put it in what's called a meter closet. So it goes in a meter closet into the different apartments. Now, we provide a primary meter. If the tenant didn't pay his bill, we'd have no access to turn off the water or any recourse of action for that. That's why the state law specifies it's a landlord's responsibility. The landlord has to hire a certified plumber through the Commonwealth in order to have this done. It further goes down on Part C or D that states, a landlord cannot put the submetering in if he already has a tenant there. He can only put it in if it's a newer tenant by a prior one leaving or by eviction. So this would be an enormous undertaking, and the city just does not have those resources to do something like this.
Thank you, I understand that. I mentioned it to, to the lady, too. And we went on to, to talk, and then I also do some research and give her some information of how she can go about doing that, you know, like control the water in the apartment. So there are some private company out there. I found out, and I gave the information to her that she can hire it. They come in, they installed it, and they monitor and everything for her. So it's just a way to help the constituents, so I just want to, you know, bring that up, and thank you.
They can also go to Home Depot or any store like that and get water conservation device. I mean, the water utility is all about water conservation. We recycle all our backwash water. We're saving approximately 18 to 20 million gallons a month in water that used to just get wasted all the time. So we're all about conservation. Any way we can help, we're more than willing to. If the landlord wishes to get a meter, it has to come accord, it has to be according to accuracy of American Water Works Association standards. Okay? And we can direct them. We're to get these meters if they wish. And also, if they don't know how to read the meter, we'll also instruct them on how to read the meter.
Awesome. Thank you so much, sir. Thanks, Mr. Manager and Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
You're set, Council Yem. Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually just going to echo what you just said, that there are videos out there and everything about how to read water meters, and there's, there's also aftermarket devices, I won't use any brand names, but they sell them, that you can actually put on the meter, and it transmits to your phone, and it tells you what your tenants, like if you have a water leak or excessive water, and they're very affordable. So that's another alternative for the landlords out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
No, any other comments? Don't see any other hands. We go to the next motion response. They say a popular motion response by three councilors on garage pass card contract. Council Janess, Council Noon, and Council Getchea, who would like to go first? Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the Parking Department for preparing this. There's a lot of information here, and I think that the best thing to do is to refer this to the Finance Subcommittee for them to include in their discussions of parking rate increases that is on the table there. So I'd like to make that, make that motion to refer it to the Finance Subcommittee. Thank you.
Second by Council Leahy, on February 1st, I post a note, I have it. Motion is carried. Any other comments from the co-sponsor of the motions? Council Kishia?
I do, thank you, Mayor Chow. You know, in, in the motion response, we were provided a document that was almost seven years old, so as I started to read through it, I started to read more, and it says in the memo, it states on page, in page three, Counting House Lofts, Adam Furniture and Appleton Mills pay market rate, but in the chart provided, it states residence rate. I'm not sure, which rate do they pay? Do they pay market rate, or do they pay resident rate? I guess through the mayor to?
Through the mayor.
Parking director.
Counsel, they would pay the residential rate. At the time the documents were written, they, they probably, the document was set up to pay the higher, the market rate, but then the city broke down the rates, and anybody in the Central Business District that lives in the Central Business District, per the ordinance, would pay the residential rate, and so that's what we do now.
Do we have copies of the agreements? Because we don't list the start dates on, on many of the things that were handed out in the chart, and it doesn't really have an end date in some of them. Like Counting House Lofts, it doesn't have a start date, it doesn't have an end date, but it says we have 30 years, so do we, do we know when those were actually started?
We, I did get some documentation just this afternoon from CFO that was helpful, but as far as I'm concerned, when they're charging, when they're paying the residential rate, I, the contract or the easement doesn't really matter because they're living there, and that was put forth to get that development done, and I am just charging them the resident rate, and when the rate goes up, their rate goes up. So they're all within the residential rate that we charge for everybody downtown.
Okay, so, so this chart really doesn't mean anything when it says terms, because you just charge based off the residential rate, and if it changes?
Exactly. You know, they needed the easement to build the development, and they've been there, and so I charge the residential rate, and they just follow that schedule.
Okay. Also, I didn't see Middlesex Community College in the new chart, but I did see them listed in the memo dated May 3rd of 2016, which outlined the college was the only agreement that used all the garages. With that being said, the memo also outlined the agreement expired on June 30th of 2018. Can you tell us if we currently have an agreement in place with Middlesex?
We do. We have a three-year agreement, and if I made a mistake, I'll fix that. We have a three-year deal with Middlesex Community College. We're on year two of that, and they pay for validations at the Davidson lot and at the, the Roy lot on Market Street, and then at Lower Locks, we have 225 staff pass cards that are used. And so the contract contains a combination of them, and we run on a three-year average of the validations, and we get a monthly check payment based on that.
So in the 2016 memo that I read, it, it says that they received roughly a 50% discount on market rate. Is that still within the, the new agreement that's only three years old?
We charge them a $4.50 validation for, to park at the Davidson lot. Typically, the kids park for one or two classes, which comes out to $3.450, something like that. So we're not really giving them a discount. We charge them per the validations that they use, and we charge them for the business rate on the pass cards at Lower Locks.
Okay, could, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, could we get copies of these agreements that are downtown? Because it's just, it's very confusing when we're going back to 2016, and it says there isn't anything, and then we hear that this week they provided something that's different that's in the memo, so there's a lot of information here. I know Wayne, Council Janess had sent it to the Finance Subcommittee. If we can send that documentation to at least the Finance Subcommittee prior to a meeting so that we could actually be on the same page as we're trying to ask questions, because I think a lot of these questions may, may have been diverted if, if we knew them in advance. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, you want to make comment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counsel, we will do that. There are some of these that go back to 1984, 1985, as you can see, and any of the paperwork that we do have, we will ensure that the Finance Subcommittee has that.
If, if we didn't have paperwork, how can we list that we have contracts, you know? And I understand that someone may have it outside of the city, but if we don't have paperwork, then how do we know what the terms of the contracts really are? That, that, that's my question to all this, and I think it is better served at a Finance Subcommittee than tonight. Thank you.
Typically, I have three contracts, Middlesex, U Lowell, and Enterprise Bank.
Okay. You done, Council Kishia? We now go to Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Terry Ryan. I'm just curious about this statement, because I, I just don't understand it. 247 parking spaces were allocated to Lowell Community Health Center to meet the needs of their employees in transient activity. Of these spaces, 37 are provided by way of easement. What does that mean, by way of easement? What does that mean?
I believe it was when they first moved to Jackson Street, those spaces were provided?
At no charge, 37 spaces there?
So many at no charge, and then we do pay, they do pay for other spaces, yes.
And who are the 37 people that are selected, chosen to park there free?
That would be up to Lowell Community Health Center.
I bet I could guess them, but that's okay. Thank you very much.
You're set, Counsel. Counsel Scott, and I just want to remind all the, all the councilors, too, this will be for discussing Subcommittee. Counsel Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know we're going to discuss this more at the Subcommittee quite a bit more, but there's a couple in here that I'm just curious. UMass Lowell, Lowell, sorry, Lower Locks, 99-year lease, it says original contract could not be found by the city? Is there some information on that, or how did we, we know all the terms and everything, though?
I think that's one of the ones I still have to work on getting. I just know it's a 99-year lease, and that it affects a couple of floors of the garage, and, you know, I'm just basing it on, off that previous memo.
Okay, and then there's another one on here. Email from Vanna Howard, Tim Regan, identifying 65 spaces for Lowell Community Health Center as part of purchase from CMAA?
So I believe CMMA was located at Jackson Street at one point, and when they left that facility and went to their new location, there was an easement for those 65 spots that Lowell Community Health Center inherited when they took over the Jackson Street property.
And we have a copy of that information?
I, I do have paperwork on that, yes.
Okay, so if we could get that information for the meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. No other comments on that motion response? It's going to be referred to Subcommittee. I just noticed there's an item here that the chief might have to comment on, so I'm going to ask for a motion to suspend the rule. Take item 7.1 out of order by Council Yem, second by Council Mercier. This section is on the ordinance from the city manager, and item 7.1 is an ordinance to create a position of the digital evidence specialist at Lowell PD, Lowell Police Department. This will be referred to a public hearing on February 7th, but for now, does anyone have comments or questions for the chief? For the chief, do you want to make a comment on this one?
The only thing I would like to say is that the first year of this position will be pretty much funded by the, the grant, 28%, and then the second year is 30, and the last year is 50%. So most of the position will be funded over the course of the three years with the small percentage from the city if it, if it is granted, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Council Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you, to the chief. I read the report, and then I saw the position, how important, critical that position is, and I, for one, would vote to support creating that position, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree that this position is important, since we are implementing the body camera, we need a digital evidence specialist to do their work. Chief, the salary proposed, you look at other city and town that do have this kind of position, is it enough, or is it for this position? I mean, it's rather low.
I believe what they did is they researched, our research and grant personnel, researched about six or seven different positions, in-state and out-of-state as well, and this was kind of a median salary range for this position. It wasn't the highest, it wasn't the lowest, so it's, what we thought was very fair for this position, starting in, in the city, and hopefully the pay is enough to entice some good quality candidates for us, so.
Thank you, because, you know, you want to look at a salary that is, you know, good enough to get a good candidate to come and do the work. So if the chief said it's good enough, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none in the motion to refer to public hearing on February 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM by Council Leahy, second by Council Janess, on February 1st, I post a note, I have it. Motion is adopted. We now go back to where we left off on the communications from city manager, the motion responses. The last motion response is C on McDermott Plaza War. Any comment, Counsel Robinson?
I'd just like to first thank the team at DPD. I mean, Giovanni and Jess and the whole team, it's, one thing I can say is, we have some excellent employees that have vision working on a DPD, because when these kind of projects come their way, it's, I like, I like the way that they present all ranges of potentials, and it forces the council to think and, and see what's realistic, what's not realistic. There's a couple of things that stood out in this overall. I can't wait to have the Senate for Neighborhood. Uh, I can't wait to have the Senate for Neighborhood Group meeting to discuss this. Some of the things though, again, I think we could probably eliminate out the gate. That would be, you know, cause, cause the whole key is keeping this a passive park. And so items that are recommended or potential opportunities there like playgrounds and those kind of things, kinda goes against the passive park idea. I think, uh, again, that's greatly appreciated, but keeping it as natural and as passive as possible while upgrading a few of the amenities is, is kind of the key. One more question is, so what would be the next steps with this? Like, uh, overall, I, I see the breakdown in, in the presentation on it. How do we get to, to, to say, you know, this is something that I think the community would like to start moving on and, uh, what would be like the first step in, in something like this that's probably gonna require multi-phases?
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Um, Counselor, I think this is a very interesting piece. I've talked about it in the past. I know that people up on, uh, up in the area have talked about how to continue that passive park look. Uh, this, this response, uh, my phone's actually been ringing and, uh, with a lot of people that are very interested with some different ideas. You and I have spoke about, uh, you know, where's the next big dig, uh, so we can, so we can utilize some of that. I want to be clear, clean fill. Uh, however, I think there's opportunity in the future and, uh, I spoke to the Assistant City Manager about this where we don't really need, um, a screened loom, you know? We could probably take a whole bunch of different, different things. Um, and some of the, some of the folks that have contacted me have said, would you be interested in talking to us? And once again, in talking to the Assistant City Manager, I think bringing this forward at this time was, was a, was a good idea. Yes, the, the number is rather large, uh, but I would love to, uh, attend the Senate for Neighborhood Action Group with you to find out what their thoughts are. How can we, uh, what is passive to the neighbor, neighborhood? Uh, what can we do? So I think this is an exciting time. I don't think, as, as you and I have spoken, I don't think this is something that'll be done next week, uh, or, or next month, but this is something that, um, has brought a lot of discussion and a lot of folks, um, are, are thinking about what can, you know, what can be reimagined up there? Because the way it is put now, most of you folks, most of the councilors know this, um, the area, uh, you know, we need to refence it around, around the current water, which, and I believe it goes to approximately 25 feet. Uh, I'm looking for a little assistance on that, but, uh, I think it's about 25 feet deep, uh, so, uh, he's not, yeah, he's not, but, uh, 25 feet deep approximately. But, uh, and I know a few folks have been at the bottom of that, uh, after we've drained it. So this is an exciting time, an exciting opportunity to really dig in with the, uh, with the, with the Neighborhood Group to find out what they believe passive could be. And I think it could be something that, um, our city, not that we're not proud of it now, but it's something we could reimagine.
Thank you, cause, uh, in, in the response, I saw one of the, one of the kind of phases, so, so to speak. Um, design and engineering, exercise trails, small amphitheater and terrace seating, which have a relatively lower price tag, especially where we still have some capital funding, I believe, available for the district. So, uh, it's, it's estimated at about 112. So I mean, something maybe a small first step like that might be the way to nibble off a piece of this and then try to build on that in the future. So, um, any, any future recommendations on, on this would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager and, um, Assistant Manager. I just want to let you know that I'm very proud of our, uh, staff at DPD, how creative, how talented they are in putting this plan together and they gave us an option of the short term and the long term. For the long term, they, uh, the plan is to fill the, um, the reservoir. One thing that I would like the city to think and the DPD to think, that reservoir, can it be, uh, constructed a, an apartment? Okay, so the apartment, uh, compound, you can fill, um, the, the reservoir at a certain level and create the underground parking garage and then you build the tower up for apartment, uh, will be, uh, an ownership condo, townhouse style with the amenity around it would make it more attractive to a lot of people who would like to own a piece of townhouses or condo with all the amenity and the view of, uh, of the city from that. So just keep that in mind. I know, um, it's a long shot, but at least if we can, uh, can think of it outside the box and maybe make this into, uh, a portion of the, the housing that the city sorely needed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing's a long shot, Counselor. Good suggestion. Counselor Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Um, through you to the manager, maybe there is a way that we can look at some, um, grant money, especially to fill that, especially where it used to, it's old infrastructure in the city. It's a high-hazard dam, as, as DEP puts it, and I, I would think that there is, there's monies out there, either federally or, or state, that would cover some of the costs for this because it is amazing property. Like you said, a lot of people fish in there. I, I used to know a person who fished in there, but, um, you know, it, it is an amazing property. I was one of the ones who came back then and tried to get them to look into filling it, uh, because we had money left over from meter project and we were saying, okay, could we fill this and get rid of this because as trees grow on the side of it, they're penetrating the side of that area, so we lower it and raise it at points. But I, I do think that there may be money out there, either federally or, or locally, that we can maybe grab some money and try to do this.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Uh, Counselor, you're correct and, and I know that, um, our DPD team has been looking around in that area to find out what can be done, but once again, it has spurred a lot of conversation just by, um, you know, replying to this motion with folks who are talking about what they think they could do. So I think that bringing it back to the council, excuse me, bringing it back to the Neighborhood Group to find out what, uh, their feelings are, so we can kind of continue to move forward. I think this is a great opportunity, obviously, and, uh, you, it's, just so everyone is clear, this is the, uh, the reservoir that is not in use right now. So if anybody, uh, sometimes people still, uh, think that it is usable water, but because it's open, it is not, uh, usable. It has been, I'm, I'm reaching back now, it's probably been a decade or two or half longer, yeah. So that, um, this water has not been used for some time, uh, with the exception of a lot of fishing poles out there, which we shouldn't be encouraging.
I, I think the unique part of this is it's past infrastructure that's basically sitting dormant and, um, there's a way to go through the grant process that way to try to find the, uh, funding. Uh, thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a quick question for you, Mr. Manager. This, this property isn't covered by Article 97 or, um, or wetlands protection or anything like that, right? Because it's, it's a former reservoir, it's not like it was anything like that.
Mr. Manager?
It's definitely a passive park. Um, if we were to take it, that would be, you know, if we were to take it to do something, that could be a problem. But I think that, um, through Counselor Robinson, we'll talk to, uh, the Senate for Neighborhood Action Group, um, as well as, uh, all of the other councilors to find out what the desires are there, but I do believe that would be an issue if we decided to try to, try to change it and, for instance, sell it to a developer or something like that.
Not advocating for any of that.
I understand.
Definitely not want to see that. I was just curious, um, as to what restrictions may be in place on that land.
You also, Counselor Janess?
I am, thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
So briefly, just to clarify, I mean, I've already brought this to the Neighborhood Group for discussion, that's where this kind of hatched and, and was incubated. Some of the things discussed that the neighborhoods, neighbors and the members of the CENAG group were interested in seeing is, is zero development. We're not, we're not looking to do anything like that. Basically, the, the, the reason we're looking to fill the center section in is to make it usable. Some of the ideas that were kicked around was maybe keeping a one-foot-deep water structure where the existing deep water is, um, including a fountain for, for the spring, summer, fall. Wintertime, uh, ice skating rink for, for, for the public to use. So there wouldn't be any real changes outside of improving on existing natural resources, so to speak, over there. We're, we're not looking to automatically put like some huge infrastructure, uh, five-floor building or anything like that. So, so pretty much what's in line there now would, would remain, it'd just be improved. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, here none. That, that was the last, uh, motion response, so I need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Leahy.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Robinson?
Uh, can we look at taking, I believe, uh, 10-9 and 10-10?
Just complete this real quick, just get the motions passed first, adopt on 5th I, post a note, I have it, motion is adopted. Yes, okay. Yeah, and before we take on these suspension rules, um, gonna need, let me make a suspension, suspension rule request before you. Just a quick announcement from the City Manager, it's good news, I need a motion by Counselor Kishia, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I would just like the opportunity to, uh, introduce Melissa DeRozes, who's over here to the left. Um, she is part of the executive team. She started, hit, she hit the ground, uh, uh, just yesterday and has been to a bunch of, uh, different meetings and, uh, pretty excited to have her, so I just want to give her an opportunity to introduce herself.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, I have had the pleasure to get to know a lot of you, um, over the years, so it's nice to see you all and a little strange to be on this side of the desk, but I'm, I'm enjoying it. I want to, um, introduce myself for those that don't know me. Um, I have been a teacher for several years at the Robinson School in Lowell, um, and I've been on various boards and on CENAG, um, so that's how I've gotten to know a lot of you. I'm really excited to be working with this administrative team and with all of you to move Lowell forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if it was, uh, slip or something, but I'm being informed, we have someone that would like to speak on motion 10.9 as well as motion 10.10, so if we could suspend the rules, maybe take 10.9 out and allow the person that's taking the time out to come down and speak on motion 10.9 first.
So, uh, suspension rule to take motion 10.9, 10.10 of order.
Yes, please.
By, by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Mousia. Uh, we'll take, uh, each motion separately, so I'm gonna read, uh, motion 10.9 first. Uh, motion 10.9, um, Counselor Nune, request City Manager, sent letter to Transportation Secretary Gina Fian Daca on behalf of the City Council expressing agreement with and support of Rep. Rodney Elliot's letter dated January 17th stating the dangerous conditions of the Rourke Bridge and asking for necessary repairs to keep it functioning until it is, uh, replaced. And Counselor Robinson, I understand that, Mr. Clerk, is there a registered speaker?
You need a second, I don't have any registered.
Okay, so, uh, Counselor Robinson also made a motion to have someone, uh, speak today, second by Counselor Nune. Who is the speaker of, please, please approach your podium, introduce yourself.
Hello, uh, my name is Justin Ford of 69 Hastings Street. Hello, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I would like to address motion 10.9. Um, I think it's clear as residents, we're all scared to travel over the Rourke Bridge. Uh, what isn't clear is the completion date for a new bridge. We have a rough year for a completion date around 2028, uh, but that is too far away for a project that hasn't even started the construction process yet, never mind the design, which I believe isn't even completed yet. So I think this letter strikes the right tone for the importance of safety. The Rourke Bridge is in a disastrous state of repair right now. As stated in the letter, resurfacing hasn't happened since 2014. Most, if not all, plates are showing significant signs of degradation, travel surface erosion, exposure of steel plates, and I'm sure more that the eye can't, the naked eye can't see. Uh, travel sur- So now we think about, uh, so now think about that and the roughly 27,000 vehicles that travel across the Rourke Bridge every day. How long do we wait for an accident to happen? I know for one, I avoid the bridge at all costs, but when there's no other option, I'm holding my breath traveling over the Rourke Bridge. I'm sure I'm not the only one. So I think it's the right approach that our representatives from the city up to the state do all they can do to keep the foot on the gas of forward progress on a new Rourke Bridge while at the same time, keep reaching out to the state to secure funding to improve the safety of Rourke Bridge. I'm sure every counselor will support this motion. With that being said, let's be proactive and not reactive. It's about safety, but also saving the city money. Thank you for listening.
Any other speaker on this item? Counselor Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Justin, for speaking. Um, we, we spoke, uh, there was a motion last week around these issues as well, um, you know, to get updated from Mass DOT. Um, and I agree with Justin's that, uh, Mass DOT probably had not started the design phase yet, so, um, Justin was saying that 2028, but the report that we got last meeting last week, it said, uh, 2030, that is completion of, um, the work. A lot, a lot of people put a lot of work into it, past, present, you know, state representative, dean of delegations, uh, now mayor, uh, now managers, um, you know, um, work on this as well as so many others. I, I know this came up, uh, the most recent, um, that's 2019, uh, when Counselor Rourke brought it out and took some pictures and really disturbing pictures. Uh, this bridge really is in disrepair and, and clearly in need of work, um, you know, while we are waiting, uh, for, uh, the new construction of the new bridge. The, so, um, you know, uh, the delegation, you know, in this case is led by, uh, you know, Representative Elliot and others and the team, uh, actually sent letters to the Secretary of Transportation and, I mean, to simply ask that the manager, I'm sure he'd be gladly, um, you know, wrote, uh, will write a letter on behalf of the council and state in strong support of some work being done in term of repairings, uh, those, uh, some of those stuff that was listed in the, um, uh, letter that the delegations, um, sent to the Secretary of Transportation. We need to, uh, you know, continue talking about it and to have some work done because like Justin, so many of us traveled this bridge, I myself included, uh, every time I, before I go over that bridge, I rolled out, I rolled down all my window, even during the cold day, telling you, coming back, same thing, because it's shaky and, and there's no way to avoid it. I mean, I don't want to go half a mile, uh, I want a quick, you know, way to get to and from where I need to go. So really, um, a lot of our resident, uh, uh, not just the resident of Lowell, the people that use that bridges in afraid, this is, need to be done, the repair. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this, this motion, um, and I appreciate Counselor, I'm sorry, Representative Elliot, uh, bringing forward the letter. I do have a few concerns though, that I'd just like to bring up. This bridge, my understanding, Mass DOT inspected this bridge in November, just two months ago, and gave it a fair rating across the board. We all know the bridge needs to be replaced, but I also don't want to alarm people about the danger of driving over the bridge if our own state agency is saying that the bridge is not unsafe for driving over. Um, so again, anything that pushes, um, the agenda of getting this bridge replaced faster, I'm definitely in support of. Anything that pushes getting repairs done to the bridge, I'm in support of, but I also don't want the public to be completely alarmed and scared of the bridge and it's our own state agency that is giving it an adequate rating. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Um, is the latest inspection on the city's website, does anyone know?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you for mentioning, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. The latest inspection was recorded on November 16th, 2022.
Would that information, would it be possible to get that information up to the city's website? Because I know, I'd have had people asking me, hey, where can I get that report? One thing I think people need to be mindful of too is, um, a lot of the, a lot of the things that we see as residents, as average people using this bridge is surface wear tear, um, the plates, the rattles, that, that's all surface. When the state comes in and inspects, they're looking at structural integrity. What, it's, it's almost like the skeleton and the bones of this bridge. Can it support what's, what, what's currently it's being used for? They would be the first ones. I mean, again, their signature goes on these state inspection reports, they would be the first ones to blow the whistle and say, we need to restrict the usage based on- on a depreciation of structural integrity. I think one thing as a community we have to be mindful of, I, yes, we need this work to go, but at the same time, we don't want to be next. I mean, we've sent out repeatedly, they just did an inspection and, and for older bridges like this, it's, it's generally every two years. The schedule usually goes inspection every two years. So I, I will support this, but, and may I ask one more thing through you to the, Mr. Manager? Are you regularly in contact with DOT, mass DOT in regards to this project? Because I know you were instrumental back January twenty twenty-two, when, after twenty years of, of, you know, a lot of talk, a lot of things trying to get done, this, this actually started to happen. So do you have regular contact with them about this project?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Man, through you to the council. I do talk to district four on a very, very regular basis. I, I am gonna echo some of the councillors' comments. We want to get this done, obviously, as soon as possible and I believe that bringing it up as often as possible is extremely important. But in speaking with Mr. Stedman over at DOT four, I have to say that I am a little concerned. The last inspection was the fall of twenty twenty-two. There were pieces and issues that have been fixed, which as of this evening at four forty-six, I'll be sending something to all of the councillors tonight or tomorrow morning, sharing with you what I received from DOT. It is, as been stated, there's been underwater inspections, there's been inspections throughout H N T B, which is one of the folks that is out there making this happen. All this is in, in good order, but just in regards to the safety, I, I understand very well, probably too well, being the, being the rep in that area for some time, that people don't like the bridge and we are in the process. We're, we're in a good spot. The United States Congresswoman had brought in some additional monies, which will be fixing this bridge, but I, I think the proof is really and truly what mass DOT has done in the past and we have to trust the bridge experts. The bridge experts are saying currently right now, which you, everybody will see, the bridge is safe. I don't want people to be concerned about that and, and the proof would be in, I hate even bringing this up, Central Street. In the Central Street situation, which has been a bridge that has been the thorn of, of every councillor here. The mass DOT originally went in and had, they were gonna replace two steel beams, but as they went in, they noticed that not only the remaining beams, but all the cross supports. And I think at one point in time, the city, Assistant City Manager and I had them up to somewhere around seventeen, so somewhere along eight main beams and all the cross supports. So when mass DOT does see an issue, people need to be comfortable with the fact, they will not second guess themselves, they will shut it down. So currently right now with the inspection that happened November of twenty-two, everybody will have a copy of that. Once again, it just came in this evening at four forty-six from Mr. Stedman, who was in charge of that. Those isolated sections, deteriorating cross bracing, they have been working on that and like I'd stated, it is on its normal two-year cycle. So it's, I believe it's a good thing to, to be honest, to let mass DOT know that this, this board is in favor and we'll, we will do anything we can to make sure that we get to the next step and to support this particular piece. But I, I do think I have to just say, I, I trust in mass DOT and I have for my entire career. They've shut down bridges and everyone has seen it. It's not a popular thing to do, but those bridge inspectors stand by what they do and we do have some of the, the highest standards, not only just federal, but we're looked to as a leader and people may mock that or, or look at it and laugh, but this is very, very serious. So the, the council will have this and, and feel free to share with anybody because we want people to feel comfortable in our city. Thank you.
You also, Council Robinson? Okay, I have Councilor Rourke raising his hand, he's zooming in. I think Councilor Rourke is zooming in from the Rourke Bridge right now, actually. Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo some of the comments of my colleagues and just to reiterate what the manager said, the bridge is safe and anything that we can do to keep it that way and to expedite the process, anyone is a good thing. My only problem is the wording of stating the dangerous conditions of the Rourke Bridge. At this point in time, we don't need to be putting the fear in the people that the bridge is not safe, but again, I will support anything that helps expedite the process. Thank you.
Council Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just a comment that I would like to, to say that this is perfect timing to send the letter to the Secretary of Transportation, but would it be possible to also send to the governor and lieutenant governor? The reason I'm saying that the timing is perfect because the governor have just filed a legislation to, to do a bond bill and she also authorized a four hundred million to fund road and bridges work. So I think it's, if we can, you know, get her attention, that would be great regarding the Rourke Bridge. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, to Council Newen, I think Council Young is requesting to amend to add, there be a letter sent to the governor's office as well. Would you be okay to add that as a second letter?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy, I also be more than happy to amend the word dangerous to disrepair condition, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, amend that, that word as well, Mr. Clerk. Any other comments or questions on favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, the motion is adopted. Any other suspension of rules to take items out of order? Again, Council Robinson.
Thank you. I also mentioned motion ten point ten, I believe.
That's right, thank you for reminding me. That was voted already to take it out of order. Motion ten point ten, Council Drinkwater request city manager reach out to appropriate state agencies to determine any state assets available to be utilized for a regional approach to emergency shelter for the unhoused. Second by Councilor Newen, Council Robinson was there, somebody wants to speak on this through your knowledge? And so there'd be a motion to have someone speak at this motion, second by Council Leahy. Please introduce yourself again.
Hello, my name is Justin Ford again, of sixty-nine Hastings Street. Hello, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. I'm here to address motion ten point ten. We have a problem in the city and in this nation and its empathy. I'm sick and tired of the council and members of this community disrespecting our unhoused and homeless population. We all deserve respect and dignity in this city. I understand it's unsettling to see people living in camps throughout the city and I'll concede that there is a serious public health problem associated with it, but the approach needs to change. It's not working. I like that this motion seeks to reach out to the State House to assess what, what approaches are being utilized, but I think it's also time to open the conversation up to the neighboring cities in this conversation as well. Let's also look to the nonprofits like Life Connection. They need about eighty-five thousand dollars for new sprinkler systems that will open up about thirty-plus beds, which is way cheaper than paying for someone to be in a hotel for a hundred plus a night. We also have seventy-six million or so in our crowdfunding. Let's use it. Some of us know housing insecurity and homelessness has almost doubled as a result of the pandemic. This fits the criteria, so what are we waiting for? Let's bring in other leaders into this fight. We can't fix homelessness in Lowell without all the help we can get. Lastly, we can't address and fix homelessness without, without addressing affordable housing, mental health, and drug addiction. This all has to be fixed at a local level. So I asked this council, what is being done to fix this problem? How many reports will we gather and how many more commissions will it take for this city to be ready to address homelessness? Cleaning up camps as they pop up isn't fixing the problem and it definitely isn't humane. Let's just be human and humble for a moment. I've been homeless and I can tell you for the most part, nobody chooses it. We need a solution. Thank you.
No other speaker, Council Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the, the reason I, I filed this motion and I understand that this is somewhat redundant. We, we've had a number of, of motions on, on this topic, a number of discussions. Several of those discussions have centered around state assets partnering with state government on a regional approach. This isn't a problem that is best dealt with, each municipality dealing with it on their own. This is a, a structural issue of, it's a housing issue, it's, it's a poverty issue. It requires an approach, it's not just city by city, it, there's a coordinated approach across municipalities in partnership with state government. We've had several discussions here and, you know, ask for assets on potential properties that, that have been brought up. To mention one, you know, the Tuck spray site hospital, it's, the, the grounds have been mentioned as a potential area to replicate the, the village style housing that was utilized at Shattuck Hospital in, in Boston. But the reason I wanted to file a motion once again is that I, I don't want to get overly focused on one particular approach or, or, you know, one particular concept of the, you know, of the, the pallet village style housing. I mean, there are other assets on, on that property, buildings and, as well as others potentially throughout the region that may be able to utilize. And we, we are just in the beginning of a, of a new administration in, in state government, many new leaders taking over it, it state agencies and I just wanted to use this particular juncture as we do start working with a, a new administration with hopefully a, a fresh set of eyes and, you know, motivation to, to attack this problem, to, to approach them once again for, for partnership and to take a, a fresh look at, at the state assets that do exist anywhere, you know, throughout this region where we can, you know, again, work hand in hand with other surrounding communities to address this in a, in a collaborative way. So again, certainly this is nothing novel, this is nothing new, but it, it just, one more attempt to, again, reach out to our, our new partners and, and state government and hopefully just find, find ways to, to, to partner with them and, and look at any, any assets we, we have that could potentially utilize to, to keep people in, in safe and warm housing this winter and throughout the year. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Council Robinson.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to first thank my colleague for putting this motion forward. Maybe this fits into that summit that, that we've requested, where we get stakeholders from the state, feds, and, uh, local communities into the same room to, to hash out a solid game plan. One thing I'd like to comment on though, it seems like week after week, we're getting speakers coming to the podium saying, this council's disrespecting unhoused, this council's doing this to the unhoused. If you look back at the motions filed, every one of my colleagues i- is working here to try to find what's the first step to, to, to bring all these different moving pieces together to provide the best kind of service in our community for the unhoused. There's no disrespect going on here. This is, is, how is it disrespectful when we're looking to find solutions to an issue that the country's trying to solve, never mind the world for the most part? We have limited resources as a community. That's something we have to take in consideration. When you're, you're trying to quarterback and manage thirty-plus providers and givers in this field, it takes a lot of coordination, a lot of resources and money. When you have to look out and it's balance, a hundred and twenty thousand residents in our city and, and provide all the other services that are desperately needed for so many in the city, this is just another service that we need to find out, how do we do this? And while balancing everything else that goes on, police, fire, maintenance, trash, waste, just the, the basics. So we keep hearing, this council's disrespectful, this council's treating people as second-class citizens. I don't understand how going to somebody, extending a hand and saying, these resources are available, we want to help you, help yourself. Hotels in the cold weather, available beds being established, more beds available this year than we've had in years past. So all while there's a motion for a summit to bring in different stakeholders of all levels to see what kind of commitment and, and resources can be brought in, we have a team that's meeting pretty much every day on different matters and areas. We're hearing an awful lot about what the city is not doing, but I think, through you to the manager, could we get a presentation at some point for the public to show at least what we have been doing and what we want to continue to do and where we'd like to go? Because week after week, it's the city's not doing anything. Well, let's at least show what we have been doing, please, because enough's enough. I mean, nobody here is disrespecting anybody. Everyone here is trying to find a solution and work with others that are also willing to find a solution. We're all looking for the same outcome here, but if, if I, I welcome and challenge anybody, if you have a, a magic bullet, please get up at the podium a- and give it to us because we're in desperate need of this and I think, not just us, bottle it because nationwide, you'll be a wealthy person. Thank you.
Council Robinson, if I could, may I comment on your, your request there? Unless this would be up to you, would it be appropriate to make a motion to refer that to an appropriate subcommittee? So it could be done as a presentation and the, the public could.
I'm not looking for a subcommittee, Mr. Mayor. I think, I'd like to hear, and I'd like this administration, who's been instrumental in, in putting a lot of these things in place and in working order and picking up where we were after a two, three year hiatus because of the pandemic, let's hear a report back to what our people have been doing. I, I don't think this is, this is something the subcommittee needs to hash out. This is something that I know our employees have been working tirelessly on and I think we need to get that word out to the public because for some reason, it seems like the city is doing nothing allegedly. Thank you.
One for the, sounds like a request to the manager's office to make a present, a presentation in the near future. Would that be okay, Mr. Manager? Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Council Murcia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree one hundred percent with, with my colleague Cory Robinson just said. Everything he said is the complete truth and I am frustrated and appalled by hearing kicking out the homeless is inhumane. Kicking out the homeless, nobody's kicking them out. We're offering them a place to go so that we can clean out the area because it's contaminated. There's feces, there's vomit, there's rodents, there's rats. Leaving them there in that squalor is inhumane and I resent anyone coming forward to this microphone saying what they just said. That is outrageous. And I will tell you that not everybody wants to go into a, a hotel. Of course they don't because they're so high on drugs, you can't do your drugs in, in a hotel. You can't smoke your crack, you can't do, you have to follow rules at a hotel. They'd rather be out on the street so that they can take their fix. Now, it isn't nice what I just said, but it's the truth and sometimes people don't like to hear the truth, but this city is bending over doing everything we can. It's not easy for, for the city to keep hiring a crew to keep going into different campsites and move them out and clean that needles and you name it is there. I could show you hundreds of pictures that the co-op team went, in fact, they, they'll be going out tomorrow at probably five o'clock in the morning to get a count of all the homeless, numbering them, how many we have at different sites so that we could keep a track on them. That's not inhumane, that's trying to keep track so that we can monitor them. When we have a co-op team that goes out in, in rain and all kind of weather to see how they're doing and what can we do and let's get you in detox or let's take you to the hospital, is that inhumane? I don't think so. So to come up here and say that this council isn't doing anything, we don't know what we're doing, it's inhumane. I resent that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Yan?
I just want to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo what Counselor Robinson and Counselor Musia said, that this council have done a lot, and there's beds, and we have the representative from the homeless here. She's also talked about there are beds, but people refuse to accept to go to the shelters because they have to obey the rule of the shelters. They'd rather stay out in a cove, in a cabin, so they don't have to follow the rule. And as Counselor Musia said, creating a lot of hazardous with trash, with all the feces and everything. So, that's the inhumane by keeping them there. So, this way, we clean out and offer them the bed, but they refuse a bed. So, again, it is not fair to accuse the council, this council not doing anything, the city's not doing anything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Kishya?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. You know, I think it is so unfair to stand up at a microphone and say that the city of Lowell, the city council, is not working hard to try to help out, try to put things in place that work. And there's always something that is reoccurring. Every time we talk about disrespect of the homeless, we talk about one place getting sprinkler systems. Let's be clear. Money does not get just handed to one place for sprinkler systems. And through you to the CFO, if you're giving out that money, I have plenty of people in the city who need sprinkler systems, and they want you to pay for it. That's not the way government works. It doesn't just hand money to companies, whether it's a 501(c) or whatever it is, whatever place it is, that comes up and says, "We're disrespecting the homeless." How about we look at disrespecting themselves? How about they're in a mental state where they can't take care of themselves? If you had an elderly parent in a house and they were doing that in the house, you would want to step in and try to give them some kind of help to get them out of that environment, to try to say, "Hey, this is humane." I know on Tanner Street, they're in wetlands. You can see what they're doing to wetlands. If you did that at your house, being an average resident, and wrecked wetlands like that, they would take your home. DEP would come in in 10 seconds with the EPA. Somehow, we're forgetting these things, and somehow, we're forgetting about the people who are trying to get to these businesses, who are being accosted as they come off the highway. It has to find a balance, and I understand what you're saying, some things. Through you to the homeless coordinator, I would like to ask her a question while she's in the audience, if that's okay with the city manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, councilors.
I think it's unfair that, and I don't know what you do for work, I don't, we hear every week, something outlines here, outlines there, then we read on social media, we go on to, and I try to find information from everybody, so I can try to come to some clear understanding for everything. I was on a Zoom meeting the other night also, and I believe there were a lot of good points that were made, but somehow, people have to find common ground. And they basically are promoting that the homeless was disrespected on Tanner Street. They were just basically discarded as not even human beings. Like, "Could you just highlight for the audience?" Because many people watching at home may not understand the work that went into doing this, that we were provided, which other people are saying, "We're not provided." So, I don't know the facts. All I can say is that one group is saying that they weren't told that they were evicting people, that, you know, personal property, we need to have storage space for people's property, but in one case, we're told they're given a long notice before anything was done. In other cases, we're told that they weren't. So, I don't know these answers. And I look at some of these people that behind us as very good citizens, and they do care. And I think everyone here cares. I'm just trying to figure out, did we just go down there one day and say, "Okay, here's the barb cat, here's the backhoe, we're going to rip this up, throw everything to the side, throw it in the back." And we're also told that our DPW is laughing at people as we were ripping apart their stuff, which, to me, some of the biggest hazards in this country are these tent cities. If you look at the fires that are happening in these places and the things that are going on, it's not good. So, we have to figure out some way to help people, and maybe, as Counselor Robinson has said in the past, there's different avenues of support for each person. How can you outline what actually went on on Tanner Street with the removal of the homeless over there? The notifications to the removal, to private property, did we give them time? We're told there wasn't time for them to get rid of it or anything like that.
So, yes. So, our co-op team goes to the encampment sites on a regular basis, and knowing that this particular encampment was going to be cleaned out, we did notify people.
How long in advance?
I believe it was at least a week in advance. And prior to that, people were aware that this was going to happen. Now, I would like to say that I have updated our encampment protocol, and so, everything's in black and white now, and you can see exactly the steps that we're going to be taking. So, in the past, was it written down the way it should, you know, the way it is now? Maybe not as particularly. I'm trying to write it down step by step so that we know exactly what's going to happen. We're not, you know, there were a lot of different moving parts to this. So, we have DPW, we have LPD, we have the co-op, we have a lot of different people. But what you said about people being offered services, that goes on a daily basis at most of the encampments.
So, when you say, and I don't want to take up too much time on this, but when you say that people, I'm not sure what you mean by people. How do we identify whose tent is what? How do we know who's actually staying there overnight? Is there an identification way of we're saying that tent X is so-and-so's, tent Y is so-and-so's, and we notified them directly? So, those are the questions that go on in my mind, is I'm thinking, "Okay, people. I don't know who people are, so..."
The co-op team knows most of the people in the encampments on a first-name basis, and people are notified directly. Lisa?
I just wanted to add something. Manager, mayor, councilors. We also have a syringe coordinator who also goes out to those areas as well. So, when the encampment is listed as being ready to be cleaned, and when the co-op is also out there, Andres is also part of it, and he goes out there and picks up the syringes as well. So, he's out there on a daily basis as well. So, it's like a threefold. So, LPD is out there, the co-op is out there asking if anybody wants services, as in mental health services or services for substance abuse, and then Andres is out there starting the cleanup of the syringes. So, it's kind of like a three-tiered. So, for Tanner Street in particular, I believe there were probably about 10 people in that area that had tents, so some of the individuals had moved their tents ahead of time. It was also my understanding that Life Connections was there on the Wednesday, helping some of the individuals move their encampments ahead of time, and also helping people to move some of their belongings, and had returned to the campsite on Thursday and helped some of the individuals move some of their stuff as well.
You talk about needles a lot, and how many needles were found at that one location? And where do they get them?
On Thursday, I believe there were close to 400, but I don't know the exact count. We weren't ready for these questions. Prior to Thursday, I don't know how many were found.
Because, again, we hear one company's name every single time we get up to this microphone. We hear about disrespect, this city of Lowell is disrespecting everyone because they won't pay for somebody's sprinkler system in a building that the company doesn't even own. Someone else owns that building besides the company who wants us to put sprinkler systems in it. And to me, that's just insanity. I can barely ask the residents for the rate that they're paying in taxes right now, but we want off-skin monies to put in sprinkler systems in somebody else's building, not the company we're talking about. So, tomorrow, if that company says, "Look, get out of my residence. I just paid for a sprinkler system for somebody's place that..." Who knows what their lease is? I just think this whole thing is taking off into, "Let's rally our friends in this position. Let's rally our friends in that position." And I don't know if we're even making headway at this point, but I do think we have to protect everybody involved. And our job as a city council is also to protect the residents as they're trying to go to these restaurants and the businesses where all this stuff is going on. If we're offering valuable services to people, and I get the mental issue, and I do think the government should be held responsible for cutting the mental funding long, long ago, but how do we correct it at this board? I don't think this is ever going to be corrected at this board, as much as people want to politicize this and put it up at a mic and say, "This council's this and that," because maybe they have aspirations for a higher office or whatever the heck they're doing up there, and they're using the homeless as a jumping block to get there. But when you stand up there and you start pointing at me and saying, "I'm not doing my work," I can tell you, if you want to come to my house and you want to sit down and do work, I'm available.
Your answer, Counselor? Counselor Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Drinkwaters. This council continued to look for ways to do better, to help. I think Counselor Drinkwaters is one of those who try, I think, you know, we talked about a year or two ago about the Tewksbury State Hospital, and now this motion and say, "Look, if you cannot do it there, you cannot do it there, and then find some other state properties that we can use to do a, not just for Lowell, but for regional, trying to help the unhoused populations." And this council has been talking about homelessness for a good amount of years, at least half a dozen of years, and, you know, it's not going to go away. We are not, we're looking, always room for improvement here. So, you know, we are not alone working on this. There's our partner trying to do, work with us and to help the unhoused population. And, you know, I'm glad to hear from the homeless coordinator, Ms. Fitzpatrick, that the encampment protocol is in place or have an update. I would love to have, I would ask that through you, Mr. Mayor, to the director of homeless coordinator to provide... Not time yet. Provide all the council an update encampment protocol so that we have it, and maybe also post it on the city website, because I heard it too, like Counselor Gachir, that, you know, that we do not, we did not give them enough time. So, timing for allowing to, you know, vacate the camp and also places where they can store their belongings, because some of the shelters, some of the places that they're going to go, will not allow them to bring their belongings, other than the backpack that they have. So, some of those things need to happen, and the communication, I think, the main thing, because it sounds like now, most recently, that has become us versus them. It's not about that. You know, we are trying to do everything we can, you know, with our partner to help the homeless population, not just finding shelter for them, but also, you know, looking as well with our partner, nonprofit out there, to do a wraparound kind of service. You know, find them a place to stay, you know, food for their dinners, and then, from there, we can get to treat their problem, be that, you know, mental health, detox, or whatever that may be. So, you know, you see also that, you know, tonight, there's a couple of other motions. I mean, speaking of the summit, you know, we just had summit, 2019. You know, a lot of the partners still around, still doing the work, still have meetings. So, I'm not sure if there need to be another summit. With that summit, there's an outline strategy, how to address those issues, and it's in the motion tonight as well. Let's come to the table with the partner that we have, you know, address some of those outline strategy and how to go about doing that going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The summit was actually included bringing the state delegation together, and the response at that time was that we were waiting until they were sworn in. So, now, that has happened, so hopefully, we can all get together. And it is similar to Counselor Drinkwaters' motion right now, that there needs to be an approach that is larger than the city of Lowell alone. I would just echo some comments of my colleagues that really hurt me, actually, saying that we're heartless or cruel. I certainly don't take clearing a site easily. I think that we gave a lot of notice to the residents of that site. I do think it is cruel to let people camp outside in New England in the winter when it's 18 degrees and there's providers providing pictures online, sharing them, of people with body parts falling off because their limbs getting frostbite. I think that's very cruel. So, for us to provide a bed, and if it was my family member, this is how I think of it, that was out there in that tent, I would want somebody to bring them into a warm bed, even if it's not the best condition, do the intake to hopefully get them services. Without services, they are in a tent left to die, and that is where I come from on this. So, I don't appreciate being called heartless in any way. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. First, I'm very happy to hear that the protocol has been updated, and I look forward to seeing that. I would ask that that protocol be translated into as many languages as we can, because I think it's important that that protocol be shared with residents of the camps as we engage with them, even well before we decide that a place needs to be cleaned out. We should be letting these people know, "Hey, when it gets to this point, this is what's going to happen," so that everybody can plan for it and work towards other alternatives. But I do want to say that I think that having this protocol in place is a step forward, and that's what I want to see us keep doing, just keep taking steps forward. This isn't going to be an issue we're going to solve overnight. It's not going to be an issue we solve this year. It's not going to be an issue we solve this decade. But if we can continue moving forward and continue improving our processes, our procedures, the services we're offering to the unhoused population, your communication with our nonprofit partners and other state agencies and everyone else, the better we can get at all this, the more people we can help. And at the end of the day, that's what this needs to be about, needs to be trying to help as many of these folks as we can to, so that we don't lose people in camps. We don't lose people off the edge, because we don't know what happened to them. So, I'm looking forward to marching forward on this and making changes step by step and really doing everything we can to help support the unhoused population as best we can. Thank you.
Your Counselor? No other comments or questions from the Counselor? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. First and foremost, to answer Counselor Robinson, the answer would be yes. We will be coming forward soon. But I do have to say thank you, and I just, you know, I have to say thank you to every councilor here, because Counselor Drinkwater, this is your motion, but as I'm looking around this chamber, I have talked to every single one of you multiple times in regards to what we can do. And it was very passionate. This is very, a lot of passion, a lot of frustration, but I believe every one of you, including myself, we're trying to attack this from the right way. This has been a problem in our country, mental health, substance abuse, homelessness for decades. And I know that because I worked a little bit, or some would say a lot bit, in Boston when we started to discuss the prescription monitoring programs, when, I'll tell you, it was Ken LaValle and his wife Sue LaValle, former chief, and Sue ran the emergency department. The opening of Megan House, the Bridge Club, helping the Lowell House, reopening a detox out in Tewksbury, increasing the days for detox, working with all the nonprofits. This is stuff that, as I look around, many of you were there to help it happen, whether as a community activist or a city councilor. So, I have to say to each and every one of you, the motions that are before the administration, I see it from all of you, the passion that you have, to make sure that we do the right thing. thing. We have been talking to the federal government. We did meet with the state delegation and we're set to meet again. We have met with other local officials from cities and towns that are contiguous. Everybody is recognizing that this issue cannot be handled just by one city or town. I share many of the sentiments that leaving people out in the cold is not the answer. Trying to get to yes, as many of you will know, that's what we're always considering doing. Some of you have worked in this in your personal lives. I've talked to private developers. I have spoken to nonprofits. And this is all at the request and the discussions that I've had with the men and women that are before me. The wraparound services are a must. This is where we are going. I just need a little bit more time. Every one of these issues will be answered. I think what we have been doing in the past hasn't been working. So we are trying to do things differently. As I had said, I have to thank the council. I have to thank the countless residents who send emails, and I know they send the emails to you as well and the phone calls, because there's a lot of passion there and frustration. But the city of Lowell is very welcoming and trying to always change. And I know that Ms. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Golden, our entire executive team and all of our nonprofits are to thank. And I truly believe that we will change things for the better. I think, I believe it was councillor Janess just a moment ago, said that we will not solve this issue. But this issue needs to get better. And I believe with all the assistance from DPD even, as I look over to my left, and the entire city, I cannot tell you how many people have come to me. In the coming weeks, I know that Ms. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Golden will have the meetings that they've put together. It's a work in progress right now on how to put everything in, in the black and white to make sure that everybody understands it in every language. There is still a major push and a major idea to, to provide more relief. But it's the relief for the residents that I've spent a lot of time with, working with, talking to over the years, as many of you have. This is something, as I stated in the beginning, has been going on for decades. There is a lot of passion in this room and some frustration, some. But I think the passion here is going to win out. I truly believe that. I believe that we're on the right track to do better than every other community in the Commonwealth. And my goal would be, truthfully, and someone, somebody may snicker or think that's not possible, but how can we do this better than everybody else? And to the councillors, I want to say thank you for your collaboration. To the nonprofits, thank you for continuing to come to the meetings and discuss and talk and try to find a solution to this. I believe, and to the nonprofits who are into trying to build wraparound services and to the private, private developers that I've spoken to. We all recognize this, this is a serious, serious issue. And thank you to our state folks, as well as Congresswoman Trahan, for even Sheriff Katusian, we've talked about. So, all of the issues that each and one, each and every one of you brought forward in a, in a matter of a motion or a phone call or an email, we will be answering them in a, probably a bulk, a bulk response. And I'm hoping that that is going to be sooner rather than later. So I do think it's important to note the regional approach that councillor Drinkwater originally started talking about, talking to the managers in the surrounding communities and talking to other friends that are around the state. This is recognized, this is here, and my continued hope is that our friends in the federal government, the state government, will continue to assist us financially to make sure we can get people out of the cold and into a warm bed, even if it is a hotel, while we start to rebuild some of the ideas we had with affordable home ownership, affordable home rentals. But most importantly, to make sure that the mental health and the well-being of, could be our brothers, our sisters, is in a better position. So, I thank you, council, for, for giving me all of these ideas and the directive to do this. And we will, we will make this better. We will go in a better direction. And I'm committed to that. Thank you.
I just have a short comments from, from up here, there's no objection, and I just want to say it's a great motion by councillor Drinkwater, which is one more approach how to deal with the housing and the homeless issues. And I cannot say better than all the, what all the councillor mentioned and what the city manager had to say. There's very, very few issues that come forward to, to the chamber that all the councillors agree on. And the housing and homeless issue, I believe every councillor here have made motions on it, have co-sponsored it, have voted in support for it. This is one of a very, very few issues that the council really agree on, come in unity, that works together to make sure that, that we move forward and have a solution to resolve this massive and universal problem. So I'm, on behalf, I'm very, very proud of all the, the council member here and we have a great city manager that will listen to all the councillors, try to make it work for our city. With that said, no other comments on favors, I, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, this motion is adopted. We've been moving around so much, I'm not quite sure where we left off. I think we, we left off at the votes from the city manager?
Six point one.
Six point one, okay. We now go section six, votes from the city manager will take up six point one. Vote authorize city manager on the license agreement with Lowell Festival Foundation, way for reading and second reading by title. City of Lowell and the city council vote authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement between the city of Lowell and Lowell Festival Foundation for the use of city of Lowell property in the downtown area for the purpose of the 2023 Lowell Folk Festival. Any comments or question by any of the council? Here none, need a motion to adopt by councillor Noonan, second by councillor Drinkwater. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councillor Gitcher?
Yes.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes.
Councillor Mercier?
Yes.
Councillor Noonan?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rourke?
Yes.
Councillor Scott?
Yes.
Councillor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
We already have taken up item six point two and also we take up item seven point one, which was the ordinance from the city manager. We now go to section eight, which is the report of the subcommittee. We have a zoning subcommittee January 24, 2023 meeting. Chairperson is councillor Drinkwater. Councillor, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The zoning subcommittee met earlier tonight on the topic of proposed zoning changes for transit-oriented development overlay district. Attending the meeting were subcommittee members, myself, councillor Leahy, councillor Yem. Meeting was also attended by councillors Noonan, Mercier and Scott. We heard a presentation from, from the Department of Planning and Development, Francesca Sigliano and Camilo Espatia, regarding changes that, some changes that are going to be required by the state's MBTA Communities Act regarding, that, that impacts communities that are near or that have an MBTA station in them. It impacts us as we do have a commuter rail station. The, the law requires communities to implement certain zoning changes to allow for multifamily housing within essentially half-mile radius of their MBTA stations. We are a community where really our current zoning, by and large, does conform to the requirements of, of this law, in that we do allow for multifamily housing in these districts. But there are certain changes under the law that, that would be required by allowing certain types of housing by right as opposed to requiring, requiring special permit. I will say that one thing that came through in the, in the presentation is that although we are essentially compelled to act by, by the state law, many of the changes really do, they're consistent with many of the, the action plans that have been put forward through the city far predating this law to address our issues of, you know, housing supply, housing affordability, as well as, you know, creating walkable communities in transit-oriented districts, particularly within close proximity to, to public transit. So, these changes really are, I think, going to be beneficial to, to our community and really important changes to address a number of different issues, particularly around housing. So, just to sort of briefly summarize the, the presentation, there are essentially three separate overlay districts that are being proposed in, in the area of the Gallagher Terminal that would allow for, or would create certain changes to the, to the zoning code to lower some of the regulatory barriers that do exist to creating housing. As was mentioned in the, in the presentation, when these issues do come before our, our land use boards to, to create housing, they're generally agreed with and allowed to move forward. But as we recently discussed, when considering changes to the downtown mixed-use district, sometimes the, the simple process of having to go through these regulatory hurdles and appear before land use boards and, and which come with a cost and attorney's fees and things like that, can stifle the development of housing. So, allowing these to come forward with, by right, but with still site plan review provisions from, from our land use boards will hopefully spur the, the creation of additional housing in these districts. So, it was a very comprehensive presentation. I don't, in the interest of, of time, I don't want to go through each, each and every change. But I know these, a similar presentation will come before this council, as the subcommittee did take a, a vote to recommend the proposed zoning changes that moved forward for consideration by the, by the full city council. So I know there will be a, a presentation similar to, or really the, the same presentation that came before the zoning subcommittee tonight will be included in a future city council packet with a presentation and an opportunity for discussion. But among the, the subcommittee members, there was very, you know, positive feedback and a unanimous vote to, to move these recommended changes forward. So look forward to the discussion at the full council. I also, I believe I failed to mention some of the other attendees at the hearing within the chamber. We were also joined by Assistant City Manager and Director of Department of Planning and Development, Giovanni Baez Rose, as well as City Solicitor Helene Tomlinson, Building Commissioner David Fuller, Assistant City Manager Sean Machado, and Melissa DeRoches from the, the city manager's office as well. So I think I just covered everybody and, you know, happy to answer any other questions or, or open up for any comments from other subcommittee members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any, thank you for the report councillor. Any comments or question by any member? Here none, need a motion to accept the report and adopt the motion by councillor Rourke, second by councillor Janess. On favors, I, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. We now go to section nine, which is the petitions. Nine point one, Boston Gas DBA National Grid requests moving gas main at Meadowcroft Street at Exchange Place to enable work by the city. Any comments or question by any councillor? Here none, need a motion to refer to public hearing on February 7 at 7:00 PM by councillor Yem, second by councillor Leahy. On favors, I, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motion is adopted. Item nine point two is the National Grid Verizon New England requests installation of one Joe Pole at 114 Burnside Street. Any comments or questions on this item? Here none, need a motion to refer to public hearing on February 7, 2023 at 7:00 PM by councillor Leahy, second by councillor Drinkwater. On favors, I, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motion is adopted. Before we get to the city council motion, councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a quick moment to ask for a motion to suspend the rules to bring in a time-sensitive manner that's not on the agenda.
Okay, motion by councillor Janess, second by councillor Gitcher. Councillor Janess, do you have a registered speaker on this one or no?
No, no registered speaker. But I just wanted to make a motion that the city council wish our chair of the birthday subcommittees a happy birthday. And I have a card for him. Tomorrow is a big day. It's one of those big round number days. I won't spoil it. But happy birthday councillor Yem, please come pick up your card.
On favors, I.
Thank you so much.
And the motion is adopted by the claps. Happy birthday councillor. Great job councillor Janess and all the, all the councillor, councillor Yem.
While beyond the topic, Mr. Mayor, if you may allow me to also wish Sean Machado, Assistant City Manager, a happy birthday as well. So let me return the favor.
We could never get ahead of you councillor Yem. We now start with the city council motions. We'll start with 10.1. Councillor Leahy requests city manager have DPW provide a schedule for summer work to be done at the following schools, Riley, Sullivan, Pine Arts and a blank, second by councillor Drinkwater, councillor Leahy.
Thank you. The Moody School was left off on the agenda, but these are just the schools that are in my district, Mr. Manager, and I was just looking for a general report on, on what we might be doing over the summer just to keep up with maintenance. Specifically, like at the Riley, we're replacing ceilings, so I just want to make sure we are on a schedule to do so many ceilings every summer. So that's all I'm looking for in the report. Thank you.
Councillor Gitcher?
If it's okay with the maker of the motion, could we add the Dealey School, Beale School and Washington School also, please?
Well, go to Mr. Manager, I'm sure you have something good to say. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. As you, as the councillors know, I don't usually speak on motions, but councillor Leahy, if it'd be okay, maybe I can, DPW as a whole, let's try to start putting a, a schedule for all the schools out there. I know that...
Yeah, no, that'd be good. If I've inspired my colleagues to look at the other schools, then that's good.
I only say that, councillor, because the 29 schools we'd have to put down. Thank you, councillor.
That's an excellent suggestion, Mr. Manager. The camera didn't catch it as soon as councillor Leahy mentioned the schools, all the councillors' hands went up in every single district, including the at-large councillors, so it was fantastic. Now, I don't see any more hands, all in favor, say I, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. This motion is unanimously adopted. We already taken up motion 10.2. We now go to motion 10.3. Councillor Gitcher requests city manager have the proper department report on the cracked ceiling, forked ceiling and/or caved ceiling of the roads during the 2022 calendar year with dates of completion, second by councillor Robinson. Councillor Gitcher?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you councillor. On favors, I, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. We now go to motion 10.4. Councillor Janess and councillor Gitcher request city manager have the proper department explore the feasibility of creating a Lowell Fire Academy to assist with onboarding of new firefighters for the LFD, as well as potentially create a new revenue source. Who would like to go first? Councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. This is just something that came up in conversation between me and my colleague, you know, thinking about ways... about ways to address Chief Sharon's barrier bringing on new firefighters and the limiting factor of the fire academy. So just wondering if there's an opportunity to leverage some of the, you know, outstanding classroom space that exists within our city to be able to do the classroom portion of these, and then find some land somewhere where we can actually do the actual practical training. Doesn't even have to be in the City of Lowell, you know, we could partner with a neighboring community, whatever. But I think if there's an opportunity here to build something that may take some, take some time to really get into place, but could have, could have great benefits for Lowell and really the whole surrounding area. There really isn't a fire training location in this vicinity, as far as I know. So, you know, this may be something that our neighboring communities would be interested in helping us with or at least providing students to, and it could, it could down the road be a potential revenue source for the city. So I just think it's something worth exploring, and I hope that this can be something beneficial in the long run. Thank you.
Okay, no comment from Counselor Gitchia. Any other comments? Here none, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. The motion is adopted. The next motion is ten point five. Counselor Robinson requests city manager provide a report on the Hunger Homeless Commission in regards to frequency of meetings, as well as focus moving forward, second by Counselor Rourke. Counselor Robinson? Oh, motion. I was reading the motion. I didn't realize Counselor Robinson just made a statement to, that speaks for itself. The, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is by Counselor Robinson and Counselor Noon. Request city manager provide a report on the status of the 2019 city manager's task force on homeless and affordable housing action plan and final recommendation. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I speak for Counselor Robinson. The motion speak for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is motion ten point seven by Counselor Noon. Request city manager have the Director of Homelessness Initiatives revisit strategies outlined at the 2019 summit, which convened at Inn and Conference Center with local businesses, nonprofits, and community foundations, as such the feasibility of reconvening or implementing said strategies which were put on hold due to COVID pandemic, second by Counselor Mercier. Counselor Noon?
Motion speak for itself, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, Counselor. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. Oh, boy, it's only one motion left. Motion ten point eight, Counselor Noon, request city manager provide city council with a report detailing the delineation of federal and state funding that is received and goes towards housing in the city, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Counselor Noon?
Motion speak for itself.
Excellent night. Thank you, Counselor. All in favor say aye, opposed say no. Mr. Manager, would you like to make a comment? Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Sean Machado?
Counselors, I'd like to invite you Thursday at four thirty to one twenty-eight Westford Street. It's a building that Smock built, that they bought. There's thirty additional available beds for homeless. We'll be touring the facility with Dave Cunningham and Isaiah Stevens. And again, that's one twenty-eight Westford Street at four thirty on Thursday, one twenty-six, January twenty-sixth. Hope to see you all there.
Okay, thank you for the announcement, Sean. So the motion ten point eight was adopted. With that said, any other announcements? Counselor Gitchia?
I'd be remiss if I didn't not only announce Counselor Yem's birthday, but it's also my wife Angela's birthday. So happy birthday, Angela. Now I don't have to sleep in the garage.
That's right. That's why you're a great Counselor, Counselor Gitchia. You know what to say. Any other announcement? Need a motion to adjourn by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Mercier. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you for watching.